Welcome, everybody. It's great to see everyone at the Charter Township of Canton Board of Trustees meeting on June 15, 2021 at 6:04 PM. So to call it to order, Clerk Seagris, can you please call roll call for the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission?
All right, Trustee Borninski.
I'm here in my home in Canton Township, and good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission.
Foster.
Good evening. I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Ganguly.
Good evening. I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening. I'm here in Canton Township.
All right, clerks, let the record reflect Seagris is both in attendance and he is in Canton. Slavens.
Good evening from Canton Township.
And Trustee Snyderman has indicated he will not be in attendance tonight. All right, now the roll call for Planning Commission. Okay, Asharia is not in attendance.
Well, he just actually, I was just promoting him, so I think he's still coming in.
All right. Chandra.
Oh, he's coming in and out. Okay.
Is he, is he here?
He was, and I said promote, and then he went away. So I guess he might be back in a second.
Okay, I will keep going. Eggenberger.
Hello, I am here in Canton, Michigan.
Engle.
I'm here in Canton, Michigan.
Foster.
Hello, I'm still here in Canton.
Green.
Hello, everybody. I'm here in Canton Township, Michigan.
All right, Oaken.
Okay, Chandra did not come back yet. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so I would like to adopt, sorry.
Singh. Weber.
Good evening. I'm present in Canton, Michigan.
And Zuber.
Good evening. I'm here in my craft room in Canton, Michigan.
Madam Supervisor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And as Shandra, I think he's coming in and out again, just to let you know. So I would like to have the board adopt the agenda with the addition of an RBA after the close, I'm sorry, just before the closed session.
Just now, for the purposes of Roberts Rules, I'm unfamiliar with joint sessions on how voting on an agenda would have is anybody here familiar with that? And if not, I'm just gonna go through and I'm gonna have everybody vote. Okay, that's what we'll do. Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented with one of an add-on RBA for Canton Township trustees to vote on for to consider closing the Canton Township Administration Building on July 2, 2021 to be placed on the agenda prior to the joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
Support.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, thank you, Clerk Seagris. Can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Right. Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagris, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Asharia. Must not be here yet, huh?
No.
Um, Eggenberger.
Hi.
All right. Engel.
Hi.
Fa, Green.
Hi.
Weber.
Hi.
And Zuber.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Agenda is passed. So the item on the agenda today is the study session, which is a joint meeting with Planning Commission to discuss Canton Leisure Services Recreation Master Plan. So Craig, would you like to start?
Are we gonna be dispensing with the RBA prior?
Um, I said, oh, for the closed session. Do you want me to do it now?
My apologies. That's not the motion I made.
That's okay.
Be, stay consistent with agenda. We just
Sure.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes, I'll go read it. So I, um, can I have a motion for consider closing the Canton Township Administration Building on July 2, 2021?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the supervisor's recommendation to close the administration building on Friday, July 2, 2021.
Support.
Thank you. Employees have been working extremely hard under challenging times over the past year or so. The township supervisor and staff would like to offer them the opportunity to relax or recharge. The Township Administration Building is already closed on Monday, July 5 to observe Independence Day. Is being proposed to also close the administration building on Friday, July 2. Grant employees one extra PTO day that they will be required to use on July 2. Are there any questions? Or comments? Okay, Clerk Seagris, please take roll call on the motion.
Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagris, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Motion passes. Okay, great. Thank you. So Craig, would you like to begin the study session?
Absolutely. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of both the Planning Commission and the Township Board to talk about the master plan. I am going to pass the torch this evening over to Ms. Jeanette Iello. She has been our staff lead and really taking charge of this master planning process for us in partnership with our other groups. So I am going to let her do the rest of the introductions and get everything rolling for the evening.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Supervisor, Township Board members and Planning Commission members. On behalf of our Leisure Services team, thank you for this opportunity for us to come together for our five-year Park and Recreation Master Plan Joint Study Session. We appreciate you all taking the time to join us this evening and provide input on our master plan. Now, more than ever, our community is utilizing its parks, trails, recreation facilities, and public spaces in an effort to ensure that we are providing spaces that are inclusive and inviting for all Canton residents. We are embarking on an update to our master plan. The plan will be used as a guide for our preservation, maintenance, development, and acquisition of green space for parks and trails, as well as recreation amenities and facilities such as our Summit on the Park, Peasant Run and Fellows Creek Golf Clubs, Canton Sports Center, Village Theater at Cherry Hill, Block Use and Teen Center, and numerous historic buildings. In addition, through this plan, we hope to gain a better understanding of our needs for non-motorized connectivity and where we can better fill in gaps in our community where we may be limited or provide no access to green space within a 10-minute walk or bike ride. To help facilitate this process and provide Canton Township with an updated five-year Park and Recreation Master Plan, we have contracted with McKenna. With us here tonight is our project lead, senior principal planner with McKenna, Laura Haub, and principal landscape architect from Russell Design, Mark Russell. This dynamic duo has hit the ground running and has been through our parks, engaging with our staff and the public, and have reviewed many maps, plans, and your goals. They have an engaging agenda for us tonight, and we look forward to hearing from each of you. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Laura and Mark.
Okay, thank you so much, Jeanette. Good evening, everyone. Laura Ha and joining me is my colleague, Mark Russell, now landscape architect. Just wanna thank you for all of your time this evening to talk about this very important plan for the next five years. I was just going to share my screen and go over a couple background slides, if that would be all right, and then really hope to jump into a discussion with everyone. So, um, you know, to start and just kind of piggyback off of, you know, Jeanette's overview of the five-year master plan, there's a number of reasons to make sure the community has an updated five-year Park and Rec Plan. Not only is it really the blueprint to, to foster that inclusive, healthy, and diverse community that Canton is looking for, but it also secures eligibility with the state for grant funding, and it also will provide for that CAPRA national accreditation. And I wanted to go through just some of the components of the five-year master plan, because it is quite varied. So you can kind of see some of the questions that we might be asking how it will fall in line with the plan. So some of the primary components are recreation inventory of all your parks and facilities and trails, classifications of those amenities, their accessibility, and analysis based on your population of which, which amenities you may have a surplus or deficiency of. And it also speaks to the trail network and overall connectivity across the township. It speaks to programming, different events, and also age groups. It includes inventory of natural features and also historic facilities. It also touches on the administrative, the organizational structure of the, the leisure services, the volunteers and partnerships that make the recreation possible in the township, and also the budget and the history of grant funding. The document also needs to include information about the process and the public input that was gathered. So our timeline, we started in May, and we're looking at adoption in October. So it's a six-month window. And throughout that window, there are a series of public engagement sessions. And we just had our first one a week and a half ago, the Farmer's Market, and we'll have another one this Thursday at the, the first summer concert in the park. And this public input is really going to help kind of guide the goals and objectives of a plan and determine what that vision looks like. The township's goals will also influence the plan and can provide for that overarching pathway. So as we go through the design process with the parks and as we start to make recommendations for the next five years, and we will be looking to strike a balance between these three primary, primary goals of the township. So that would be the healthy ecosystem, creating that welcoming community, and then ensuring that the infrastructure is quality, both existing infrastructure and any new investments that you make in the future. The last major component of the Park and Rec Plan is the action plan. You can think of this as a CIP, a capital improvement plan. And we will be really looking to strike that balance between making sure that your existing infrastructure is maintained while also understanding the maintenance and legacy costs of new amenities and planning for those within the next couple of years. We're also doing a focus on two parks, master design plans. And that would be Heritage Park and then also Patriot Park. And as I mentioned, we just had our first public engagement event. It was well-attended at the Farmer's Market. And one of the exercises that we had was asking what the, the top three amenities for Patriot Park might be, and asked individuals to rank those. And the top response was a rope obstacle course. The second was an inclusive, accessible playground. And then in the tie for third place was a sledding hill and paved accessible pathways and trails. We also heard in general about Patriot Park and Heritage Park, that they are both very unique spaces and an opportunity to do something really amazing. And there were a lot of discussions and points of interest on gardens, using natural vegetation or native vegetation, excuse me, providing for activities for seniors and ensuring that there are shaded areas across the parks for various activities, including picnics and music. So for today, um, you know, as we continue to gather public input, we'd really like to better understand the direction and priorities of the Township Board and the Planning Commission. And so of the memo that I believe you received with several questions, to start thinking about these four questions, we feel are the most important for us to better understand. And I'm hoping that we can at least cover these four this evening. And if it would be okay, maybe just to go kind of around the horn and give everyone a chance to answer each question and provide, you know, a little bit of input. And then if there are, if there are other ideas outside of these four questions, we'd certainly love to hear them. If it's on, drag an email, and I'm sure that information will be passed on to us. We're also happy to have, you know, a side conversation and meet with you as well. So I'm gonna set the share in just a second, but this first question really, I think, gets at the amenities across the township and ensuring that everyone has adequate access and that there are no park deserts. So the question is, what do you consider as essential activities? So what every resident should be able to just walk or bike to from their home? And would this be a natural open space? Is it an active recreation opportunity, passive recreation? Is it outdoor gathering spaces? Are there other thoughts on what is an essential activity? I'm gonna stop the share, and if we could just kind of go around and quickly share, that would be really helpful for us. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, sure. Let's start. I'll start at the top. Diane, you go first. We're going down the Brady Bunch lines here.
Well, you know, one of the things that I know I've heard from a lot of residents and the board as well is having a walkable park for neighborhoods, so pocket parks. I know we recently put one on the northeast side of Canton. And I think that's one thing that's very important. And then I don't know if I have those questions. The other was a passive park for trails and walking. I think that too is very important for residents to be able to, to go and walk the trails.
Thank you. Kate?
So, um, for me personally, places to walk, especially to walk with my dog, are important to me. I also think that places for children to play, playgrounds where they can play, not in an organized way, but free play for them, I think are really important. So those would be my priorities.
Thank you. Craig?
I agree with the earlier comment about walkable parks. I think that's a real important thing. My wife does a lot of walking. She enjoys that, and the more opportunities, the better.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, um, I am, I, I was in the Semco Park Seminar, and I saw that a fall that there's an app from Semco which talks about different parks and Canton has I'm like, park-wise, Canton has few named parks, and I would like to have the small pocket parks in the communities that everybody lives in, especially on the northern side of Ford Road. And there could be play areas, but you know, there could be an open space where children can play so that, you know, there is an opportunity for kids to play around. There could be play structure, depends on the investment, but my, my thing is, and I am also interested in trails where people can bike around, bike paths. So that's, those are my top priorities.
Thanks, Dawn.
I concur with what a lot of people have said. I think that I noticed on the map that was shown as part of the presentation a little while ago, that I live in a really nice park-rich area of Canton, but there's sort of a, you know, an area north of Ford Road, as Tanya said, that is kind of empty, and, you know, there aren't a lot of parks up there. So I feel very lucky that I'm where I am, but I think we should focus on trying to fill in some of those gaps in the, in the community.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Yeah, I hate to sound redundant or anything, but I, I agree that there should be more walkable paths, walkable parks within the, within the community. And I also agree with what, what Kuscher Zuber just said about having more park space north of Ford Road. I happen to live north of Ford Road, and we, we do have a, a, a lot of non-park space, shall I say. I'd also like to see if there's a way to kind of continue the path, the, the follows the route out further into the township, to kind of connect it into other parts of the township.
Thank you. Craig?
Um, thank you. The, the fourth question in the presentation sparked a question that I have, and I'm kind of embarrassed to, to, to use this question because I used to do this sport. I don't anymore, but if I was doing it, I would love to do it locally. Cross-country skiing, is it something that is perpetuated in a, in a real, well, more or less formal way? Either through the trails system or at the golf courses? I know a lot of communities will use the golf courses and have specific trails dedicated to cross-country skiing. Do we have anything like that for the community?
We did do cross-country skiing this winter through COVID. They did lead some, some groups through.
Okay, was it, was it on a formalized path, or was it through the network of the trail system? How was it done?
I saw through the, some people on the ITC trail, some of our leisure services, people also helped.
Okay, all right. Because I could, I could see where that would be from different levels of the sport, something that could be encouraged as a community event and activity throughout the winter in terms of utilizing areas that wouldn't be utilized otherwise that much. Yeah, obviously, the golf courses are not going to be used for golf, and you have to be careful about the, the greens and the tees and stuff like that. But you can arrange trails through the golf courses that could be quite interesting, quite nice.
Yes, thank you. Mark? Mark Russell, did you have anything? I'm sorry.
Um, I'm on the team. I'm just listening right now.
That's right. You're taking, you know, saying, you, Nancy.
I have all kinds of ideas. I could throw those out if you'd like.
Okay, we'll hear you. I'll hear you in a second. Thank you. Nancy? I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I like the ideas that everybody came up with in terms of the parks in the northern part of Canton and the walks. I, I feel like that I'm somewhat unaware of a lot of the walks and paths that are out there. And, and maybe I need to do a little bit more Googling of Canton Township walkable areas. And then I, and then maybe it'd be all right there, you know, and it would jump up. But in my daily social life and social media, I don't necessarily see anything that's telling me, hey, you know, here's a great walk, or here's a great path. And I think that would be really helpful to know where I could go and what my options are. Because I think certainly through COVID, we've all decided that, you know, we need to get out and move around and feel safe. So that would be something I'd love to see.
Thank you. Michael?
Lots of great ideas. I already got a crack at this because luckily I got to meet with the, the supervisor and treasurer and kind of get the consultants here and talk with Leisure Services about this. So I don't need to kind of reiterate everything that we, we had talked about. I was extremely happy to see some of the cool ideas that were coming from the, the general public as well, kind of fit into the overall goals that the Township Board had already had, and a lot of fitting into what we've been doing with Leisure Services already. Love the idea of pocket parks and closing in those, those park deserts, making sure that people have access to recreation, outdoor recreation and not just recreation, just passivity as well. I love Patriot Park. It's a blank canvas. Sledding hill there sounds like a great idea. I think that, especially if the intention is to create, is to create a good amount of passive space there, things like, like winter program, like snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, that could all be done out there. It could be, could be fun. I know this last winter, we had the sled, Leisure Services did the sled rental, which was super creative, super cool, and the community loved it. And, um, but overall, the program that's been coming out of Leisure Services has been pretty awesome. I got the insert for the summer programming as well. I got really excited about a lot of the stuff that's being offered. With regard to this, yeah, there's a lot there. I know, so a friend of mine is on the Farmington City Commission, and I don't know if she created it, but they have like a Pathfinder Committee, and it's a bunch of people that walk around Farmington looking for places to put more trails. And it's like her committee. She just kind of walks around Farmington with, you know, seven or eight other residents, and they're just like, oh, here's a county drain. You might be able to put a path down that would connect with this path, and here's this with this. So things like that. I really like the idea of finding ways to get the, the community involved because Canton Township is huge, but a lot of people have moved here recently, and they're not familiar with our decades of tradition. They're not familiar with all of our offerings. And that was abundantly clear when we did this, the joint thing with the library. It was, you looked at the cross tabs, the newer residents were unfamiliar with what Canton offers. And is it our fault? Is it their fault? Okay, like, you know, it's our duty to, to fix that. But, but again, getting people as involved as possible, I think, is super cool because you also get ownership over that, and you don't have to do all the lifting yourself, and the municipality doesn't have to handle all the lifting in our, in our own budget. So I like that idea of finding ways to integrate, integrate the community, get them involved. And you know, if there's one thing I would recommend is that every place we have a swing, a play structure, we have a swing set. And I'm just speaking as a, as a parent to a toddler and a two-month-old who will be very soon wanting to swing. It's a cool, it's a cool kind of like one-two punch when you're out in a park and there's a swing set and a play structure. So that's just my advice there.
Thanks, Summer.
Yeah, so I definitely agree with everyone said that we should figure out a way to fill in some of the park, the areas without parks in the township. I've been lucky. My son grew up in an area where there were two parks nearby, Floden and Griffin, and he could choose to walk whichever one, depending on which friend he was hanging out that day, and it's right by the ICP's trail. And, you know, he loves to ride his bike, and I, you know, even when he was smaller, I felt safe with him going there on his own. And so I would love to have more areas like that within the township.
All right, thank you. I know, um, we had talked about, like I said, some of the board goals. I mean, one of the overarching goals is to have a park at your front door within 10 minutes. So everybody in the township be able to walk out their front door and hit a trail or a park somewhere. Some of the other smaller things we had, I don't know, I just want to let the Planning Commission know, is like rain gardens, community gardens, butterfly gardens, trails. We talked about a lot of shade. Wherever I see benches on some of the trails that we have, I see people sitting and gathering now and talking. So that's a lot of fun. And then, um, let's see, ice skating rink. I heard that also. Nice skating rink in the winter. And then, you know, having volleyball, sand courts, pickleball, I hear that a lot too. And some stone theme areas. Someone just put a little sign out on one of our trails to remember the, all the people who had passed in Canton over COVID. And so I know in other areas, people sometimes will pass stone, paint stones and put them down. You know, as in you can take a stone or leave a stone. So a lot of activity for kids, like Michael said, with ADA accessibility. Kate, you had some more?
Oh, yeah, I, um, I looked at my list that I had written down, and I forgot. And this is just me and my pipe dream, but I, and I, I know probably it's a stretch for both the, the rest of the board and also for our budget, but I would really love to have a public pool that is outdoors. So I'm just putting it out there.
And Stephen is not here with us, but he would say that he wants every single trail and sidewalk connected in Canton. That is a big goal. That's a big one. Grace, did you have anything? And biking, yes, to bike. Grace, did you have anything? And biking, yes, to bike. Grace, did you have anything?
Um, I think it would be really nice to see a lot of the parks in addition stuff be accessible for everybody. I think that's a big component to make sure we include.
Thank you. Did anyone else have, Greg?
Um, it's kind of late now because so much has gone, gone forward in Canton in terms of development. But as a planning commissioner, I have longed, I've often thought of an ordinance, quite frankly, an ordinance that said, if you're building a neighborhood, if you're building a community, it should contain at least one connection to an adjacent community, if possible, for pedestrians only. No streets, but just if, if you're putting up a, a site condominium community next to a site condominium community or another community, there should be a connection that people can walk to so that they don't have to go out on a major thoroughfare to walk. You know, they can, they can enjoy new neighbors. And it, it just would be good, a good community effect to do that. Just something I'd, I'd love to throw out there.
Thank you. Michael?
I jump on that real quick because I think it's a really creative and pretty cool. What I've also noticed though, through the planning process is when you start engaging the neighbors in a development and you start talking about putting trails inside those developments, you start getting the NIMBY stuff where people are like, they don't, essentially don't want people walking in their backyard near them. I know that we had the, um, the neighborhood that was done in Cherry Hill Village recently. And there was supposed to be a walking trail that, that kind of went during, um, through an old driveway. And the neighbors on both sides were like, look, we don't want that trail there. We don't want people walking down that trail and we abandoned that. So I think it's a cool concept. I think if, if we're going to do it, it's going to take, I think, some, some courage for both, from both these bodies to kind of say, you know, sometimes we're going to have to have people come and beat us up and we're going to have to take it. If we think it's the right thing to do, we move forward. Regardless.
Tanya?
Yeah, but I have seen in the new neighborhoods that's built around near my, where I live. I live on Beck Road and, um, it's almost the border of Plymouth. And I've seen some new neighborhoods where they are building such paths, uh, you know, to walk around. And we just walked around across the road and we walked around and it would really, it'd be great to have those connections because there was no connection. We had to jump over a stream and, you know, to go to the next one. But they had really, that was a new neighborhood and they had really nice walking paths. Like really be very far from the houses, but there was a path behind the houses. So if we can work on new plans that come up. Something about.
Thank you. I think that's everyone. Doug, Doug has his hand raised. Oh, I'm sorry, Doug. Go ahead.
Um, thank you. Um, just wanted to expand on something somebody else said earlier about the idea of having all the trails and such throughout the township being connected. And I don't even know if this is physically possible or not, but it, in kind of like, Ms. Borinsky said, maybe it's a pipe dream. To have, even to have the trails connected, but to have them connected through all the various parks that end up in the township. Whether it's through bike trails, walking trails, whatever the case may be. Again, I don't know if that's physically possible, but that's kind of a nice idea and could make, make, uh, Canton much more, um, recreation friendly, much more family friendly. We have so much, uh, heavy traffic in this community that it would be nice for pedestrians to be able to get here and there on bicycles without having to navigate the four roads and such of the year, of the area.
Okay.
Um, and to expand on that, I also would, um, love, and I think it, there has been an intention, but maybe not the funding. But to connect up to trails that are in other communities also. Like I live in southwest Canton and when I drive out onto Geddes Road, there's a really nice trail along Geddes. And I am so jealous because I would love to ride my bike along there. But I would have to drive to somewhere, I don't know where, to connect to it. And then there wouldn't be any place to park. So I just think that would be really, um, cool to connect to, to other communities.
That's a good point. Um, we can kind of just let you know, just approached, just they want to connect the Holiday Park from Canton all the way to Heinz Drive. And that would take you a lot of places.
Yeah, just, just one more, one more thing. And this is, um, you know, this is, I'm sure been tossed around so much. I believe that there's a sidewalk connection organizational committee within the township that reviews, uh, possible connections where there will not be development. I don't know if that's still ongoing. I don't know what kind of budgeting they have, um, or where the funding comes from. But I would certainly encourage that because, as you know, supervisor, the new developments all have to put sidewalks on major thoroughfares. And, and if they're doing residential development, they've got to put sidewalks as well. However, uh, we do still have gaps, um, between, uh, communities, which force people to get out on the main roads, which just totally frightens me. But it costs money to change that. And I, I understand that. There's no question. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to push that kind of endeavor to, to make those connections where they otherwise are not going to be possible through development.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that is one of the board goals also, to close all the sidewalk gaps. Thank you, Michael.
Good.
See, and I'll see Jade on, he was at one time and Patrick knows, you know, he, he works on that a lot with the, through the planning process. But in, through engineering, Erica Hidalgo was kind of like our queen of sidewalks and she takes over. We had, um, in recent years, we've doubled the budget for the sidewalk gap program to close those gaps. And I think we've talked about potentially putting in for, um, for earmarks in the future to try to potentially close, um, all of the gaps in Canton Township. It's, it's still like a multi, multimillion dollar project to do that. Because you've got, most of our gaps are a product of county drains. Essentially, you'd have to put a, a bridge and, you know, the, 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 the smallest cost, I think, of each one of those bridges is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. So you start to, you have 14 county drains, you know, 14 times 100,000. You start adding up plus the concrete to close it. And then at acquiring right of way, a lot of these people who are, you know, have, have owned those homes on, on the major roads for, for, for decades. They're not interested in having people walking through their yard or, or, or having a sidewalk go through. Or they don't want to be liable when the sidewalk program comes through. And they've got to replace those slabs because of a tree root. But you're right. I mean, it's, it's, it's an intention of our, ours. And we're, we're working on, I think Jade's working on a, an actual sidewalk closure comprehensive program of like, you know, over a period of, of a certain amount of years, what is the cost? How do you close every gap in Canton? And some of them are, some of those are ours, you know? We have gaps at parks. We have gaps at the golf course at, um, over on Lots Road. Uh, you know, that's.
I have a good one. I've been an advocate of for, for, uh, over a decade now. It's on Geddes Road. Yep, absolutely. If you, you could walk on the south side of Geddes, you could walk all the way from Canton Center to Denton. If they would fill in that gap, um, that's right over the signs drain. There, there would, uh, there's a, I think, an individual residence there. And, um, you know, you've got a, and, and there are some challenges to the terrain. I, I admit that. But, uh, I, I see people walking across that bridge, which is very narrow. And I think, oh my God, the traffic's going by about 55 miles an hour. And you got, you got, uh, people with kids, bicyclists, whatever, going, and, and those cars are going right next to them. I, I, this always worried me.
And with the, uh, with the gaps, um, in municipal services, we have been working on a, uh, not just mapping all the gaps that are there, but we have, uh, both the planning division and engineering division have been working together to, uh, come up with a methodology for prioritizing the gaps. Uh, so on the planning end, we're going to look at gaps that are near neighborhoods, near schools, near parks, where we can extend those networks outward from a park or from a neighborhood so that, that can be a force multiplier for parks if there's more, uh, accessibility to them. On the engineering side of things, uh, they'll be looking at how easy the gap is to construct, whether it, there's environmental features, whether they own the right of way, whether there is design required based on the length. So, um, we're working on our data right now and pulling that together. And at some point this summer, we'll probably get together and merge and, and, uh, come up with some kind of a scoring system where, uh, we have both the, the planning and the quality of the filling the gap as well as how easy or inexpensive it would be to construct. And then we'll have some really good data this summer in terms of looking at the gaps and what can be achieved. And if it's something that's, uh, high quality but harder to construct, we, we can prepare a plan and start working on a plan in terms of coming up with a timeframe to have that closed.
Thank you. It's all yours again.
Thank you. And I'm just going to put the second question that was on the screen in the chat. Um, that way everyone can see it at, at once and refer to it. And the question really focuses on Heritage Park. And so are there any park features, pathways, open spaces, um, any sports, recreation facilities or programs that should be developed, improved, removed? Or added in the park? And one area in particular that we are taking a, a little closer, uh, look at is the triangle, um, open space that is just west of the pond. It's kind of, um, it almost is like a, a theater, um, with a tree canopy, kind of, um, fanning the sides of it. But that is a rather large, um, open space, um, that might be able to feature a new amenity. And so interested to hear your thoughts on Heritage Park.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to put the question up?
Oh, I did in the chat.
Oh, in the chat. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You want everyone to answer again, Laura? Want me to call them out again?
I know it puts people on the spot, but I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to, to add to the conversation if they'd like.
We'll go backwards. Michael, you can start.
Yeah, so I, I'm unfamiliar with how Heritage Park was, was developed. I remember in, in, I think it was like 1990, I'd say 92, we went there. Prior to the park actually being developed, it was for the, um, during, for George Bush, George Herbert Walker Bush was there campaigning. And, um, I was in the audience with my family and I think it was just a field back then. But, um, uh, it's hard to remember. I was really young. But, um, but that said, when I go there for some events, it, it feels like it's compartmentalized and that may have been intentional by design. But, you know, there's a large distance between, uh, the play structures in the North Pavilion and this play structure in the South Pavilion. And so for some festivals like Liberty Festival, um, I wonder if like sometimes things like the food trucks get missed because people, it, it feels like it's a, a whole different thing altogether. It doesn't feel like it's like one collective. So I, I, I don't know if there's a way to try to drive everything and connect everything together. I'm sure smarter people have been thinking about this than myself. Outside of that, I will say, um, love to see swings over by the, um, by the North Pavilions. That would be huge. I love the accessible playground over the North Pavilion. I love the musical instruments and things like that. That's a really great playground for individuals, especially from an accessibility standpoint. So I think like, I know we want to have accessible, uh, features at, in all of our parks. But if, 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 if it can continue to be kind of a, a place, where, um, kids of all abilities can play and have fun, that would be super cool, super awesome. The bathrooms are awesome. Those are key as well. If you're going to do Kate's outdoor pool, probably Heritage Park makes more sense than any other place in Canton to do it. But, um, you know, don't bring that bill to me. I don't want to. But I, I mean, I like it. I like, um, I like the open fields. I like the, the walk around the pond. The pond itself allows for the fishing derby. That's a sweet activity. I feel like we've done the camp out, the family camp out there. I know it's an Indy park this year. But I feel like we've done it there in the past, which is, it's a good place to do it too. Great place for the fireworks when COVID's not ravaging everything. Trying to like wrap my brain for things that you could add. I would have said shade structures at the splash pad, but that's coming. So, um, I don't know. That's, that's what I got. I, I think it's, it's a great open space to gather in place for the community. It's kind of where we feature most of our key programming is done there. It's got the bathrooms. It's got lighting. I, I can't think of anything to, to add. Or really to take away. I don't know.
Did anyone have anything else?
Would it help if I shared a picture of Heritage Park real quick so that everybody can, yep?
I think the ice skating rink would go well here also.
You know, one thing I was interested by is we don't allow motorized vehicles in the pond. I assume there's a story behind that. It, it alludes to some ordinance of the township that I'm unfamiliar with. I've been meaning to research this on, as to why we don't, like racing boats in at least one of those ponds. But, uh, that wasn't, it was an interesting thing to me. I thought, you know, there might be, you know, it'd probably be messing with the wildlife. So maybe that's why you don't want it, but.
And more paddle boats, right?
Oh, like renting paddle boats and stuff?
Yeah.
I was going to mention that.
That's fun.
Another thing is that, you know, there really isn't, I mean, I know there's shade, but there really isn't a lot of shade because we go there and walk around quite a bit. Maybe adding more trees, but I would like to see more shade there.
Yeah.
And that they have easier for, you know, uh, folks maybe who have a difficult time walking, whether it's wheelchair, they are just making the, the paths a little easier, walkable. And then extending the one park with the excessive, you know, the accessible park. And I know that's going to take a while, but it is a wonderful park and it'd be nice to see that a little, a little larger.
Tanya?
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we have benches there on the walk next to the paths? We do have benches. Okay.
We need more benches.
I think we, I, I get the feeling that we need a little bit more because, uh, I think that's the biggest feature that I was, uh, going through, walking through the ANR book trails is having benches around. So once in a while, you're walking for 20 minutes, you have a bench around. Even on the trails, if we have a, have a bench. But, uh, concerning Heritage Park, I agree with Diane. It's, it's a big open area. It's very nice for public gatherings, but shade is a factor there. We don't have shades.
Kate, did you hear something?
So I, um, I agree with, um, Michael and Diana. I had on my list boating. And I know during Liberty Fest, we've had some, um, paddle boats out there, but I, I don't think they're township owned. It's a company, I think, that brings them in. Is that right, Greg? Um, so I would, I mean, I would go do that. So. Also, yes, definitely need a lot more shade. I, I like to go walking there, but I, I like it, but I hate it because I know I'm going to get a sunburn if I'm not real careful. I also think maybe more, more or some picnic tables might be nice. I think there are a few, um, I think like maybe behind the summit, there's some or something. I can't remember exactly where they are. They're definitely not a lot, I don't think, except for at the pavilions. But I'm thinking like maybe by the pond might be nice. And then I'm throwing this out there because when my daughter was little, we had a, we had a problem with the wooden place structure. My, my daughter actually got a sliver in her finger that believe it or not, was so large and became so infected that she had to have surgery to have it removed. So, um, I'm wondering if, um, there have been other issues with the wooden place structure and if that's something we need to look at. Just throwing it out there.
I was playing on that structure with my grandson about three weeks ago and they've, um, sanded it down and repainted it and stained it and everything. So hopefully it's okay.
Yeah, they do. I think that's done every few years at least. But, um, this was a $300 bill. And I mean, it was literally like that long. This sliver that got in my daughter's finger, you cannot believe it.
Wow.
We're at that play structure about four times a week. I have yet to see that happen to anybody recently.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
If you tear that.
Maybe it was just my child.
You're going to have a two-year-old on your hands if you tear that play structure down. I'll tell you that right now.
Well, I'm not saying to tear it down. I'm thinking like somehow improve it. Well, I'm not saying to tear it down. I'm thinking like somehow improve it. I'm not thinking tear it down.
Anyone else for this one? For Jeanette and Nancy?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that this Heritage Park has this great story trail. Some of you may not have seen it, but it is this wonderful opportunity for kids to go and read a book as they go, which I think is wonderful. But I also was wondering, and I think I've heard about this at other places or seen it where you walk along and you'll stop and it'll say, do ten sit-ups, or probably tells you to do a lot more sit-ups than that. But then you walk a little bit further and there's some other kind of exercise activity that you might be suggested to do. And there might be some exercise equipment there, like something to do pull-ups. And I've always thought that would be something that is a nice way to, maybe if you're going for a walk and you think, well, maybe I'll do two sit-ups. And you just.
Heaven and Heinz Park.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So I think something like that, I think, might be nice.
I think I think Doug had his hand up before me.
Oh, I didn't see his hand. Doug?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to bring this up, but you mentioned programs. And what I'm thinking of, it's not necessarily have to be exclusive to Heritage Park. But one of the things I would like to see happen is a program developed for for girls lacrosse in this community. It's becoming a bigger and bigger sport. Of course, soccer is so huge in this community. But but lacrosse is getting quite big. And there is a, there is a youth boys program through the, through the Leisure Services Department now, I believe. But there's nothing for girls. And quite frankly, by the time the girls get to our high schools, they don't, unless they've played club sports, they don't really, they haven't had a lot of exposure to that sport. And our high school teams suffer. You know, there's always been feeder programs for football in this community and soccer and baseball and all that sort of thing. But nothing for this sport, which is indicated is getting bigger and bigger around the country. And yes, I am biased because my daughter does play lacrosse. I was going to college to play lacrosse. So. But I would like to see our high school teams have a chance to be competitive with some of our neighboring communities like Northville and Livonia and Brighton and all of that. That seem to have robust programs in this field. So that's just something I would like to see happen. Again, it doesn't necessarily have to be exclusive to Heritage Park, but anywhere in the township for that matter.
Thank you. Summer?
Yeah, so I just wanted to echo what Michael said in the beginning about the connectivity of the park. I love Heritage Park. I think it's great. It has just about anything that anyone could want in a park. But I think it would be great to connect, to better connect the different areas of the park. And one of the things that always drove me nuts about Heritage Park, and this maybe goes back to our first question, the first question that we talked about, was that a lot of people in the township have to drive to the park instead of being able to ride their bike or walk there. And so just really thinking about how to make the park more accessible for a lot of Canton's residents, since a lot of their, a lot of our programming and takes place at the park.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? All right. Thanks, Laura and Jeanette.
Is it okay if we talk about another question?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Before you start, I just had a quick, I was just.
Oh, you're freezing, Tanya.
Do we lose Tanya?
Thought it was just me.
Why don't you go ahead, Laura? She might have to call back in.
Okay, thank you. I did want to touch on sustainability a little bit tonight. And so I'm going to put the third question in the chat. And this is really focused on the board's goal of a healthy ecosystem and what that looks like. Because it can be, it can take, take many different forms. So is it the use of native plantings? Maybe it's solar panels? Is it pervious pavement, reduced lighting? Wildlife areas, rain gardens, removal of invasive species? And so interested to kind of get a better understanding of what your vision of the healthy ecosystem looks like for Canton in the next five years.
Way I say all of the above.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. Using solar cells on some of our lights, so we don't use so much electricity. And do you know, I have something like forty-eight acres of pavement, paved parking lots in Canton. So maybe use more gravel parking lots.
Yeah, which especially if we have newer parks like Patriot Park, you know, instead of paving that driveway.
I love the dark sky thing. I don't know if it's practical where we're at here. I can see people. I can see people being concerned about security being in, being in an urban slash suburban area with less lighting. Plus, we're surrounded by so much commercial development and lighting and all that. I don't know that maybe, maybe that's something you could develop at Patriot Park. But I love the idea. I think those, I think those kinds of facilities are super cool.
I think that the dark sky can happen with the the right kind of lighting. It doesn't necessarily have to be dimmer. It just, you don't want it splashing up into the sky. You want it pointing down where it needs to be lit. So maybe there's a compromise there. But I agree that we're in an area where there's so much light from Detroit and just from the other communities and all the, all the development here that I think would be really difficult to get a dark sky area.
I know. Somebody, I don't, somebody had mentioned that, have you ever seen the big flower solar panel at the library? It's huge. They have smaller versions also where there are solar panels. It's a big flower and it turns with the sun. Tanya, did you want to finish what you were saying before?
Yes, sorry, my network froze. Yeah, I had a question on, is there an option to rent the athletic field? Or, you know, different kinds of sports if people want to say?
Yes.
Okay. Because people keep asking me this question, how do I rent a place to play cricket?
Just call Leisure Services.
There's a field request form on the Canton Sports Center page. I think it's also on the Parks page. And if you put the request in, as long as the field's available, we'll do our best to make it accommodating.
Yeah. Also, can somebody repeat the next question because I was.
It's in the chat.
In the chat.
Greg?
I had a, I had a question. This is, I don't know if this is something that we even want to get into. But we seem to be getting bombarded with a lot of advertisements for solar additions to our homes. And and I guess there's a governmental subsidy that's out there and there's all sorts of things. But I, I think that there's a lot of confusion and questioning as to how individual homeowners can relate to that kind of investment. And maybe the township could take a positive role in in terms of information given to homeowners, how it relates to homeowners associations. You know, the legalities of it. The ins and the outs, because people might want to get involved, but they're maybe a little hesitant because they just don't know enough about it. Is that a thing that the township should get involved in or just let the wheels turn as they may? Anybody have any ideas on that?
You know, I just got an email that I apparently deleted, but Ann Herbert is putting together a, I I don't know, they're, they're having meetings to discuss whether if they can get a group rate on solar power if people participate at the city level. And I think that might be something cool to look at if we can negotiate, you know, like we do with the sidewalk replacement with a company or more than one company. And if I can find that information, I will forward it to Anne Marie. The other thing I was thinking of before you said that, Greg, is that it'd be really cool if we have solar cells or pervious pavement, pavement or rain gardens that, that we make sure that we put up some information about those features for people to learn, you know, what that's for. And, and, you know, maybe even what it would cost to do this on your own property or something. Even if it's just linking to the website, you just scan a QR code at the, you know, at the feature. And you can go to the website and learn more about what that, you know, like rain gardens, people don't know what those are for, but they're, they're wonderful. As long as you're not trying to sit outside like next to them.
Make it, make it, make them see how it's relatable to their lives.
Exactly.
What do they, how could it, how could it affect their home or whatever?
Yeah. And why we put that, you know, why we put in a rain garden, you know, why, you know, how does it help with stormwater management? So.
All right. Thank you. Kate?
So I wanted to echo what Don just said about, you know, rain gardens and pervious pavement. I know, I think Anne Marie, you and Diane had mentioned gravel parking lots. If I, if we had all the money in the world to pay for pervious pavement, I would rather do that than gravel. Because I don't like walking on gravel. And I don't like how muddy, like, you know, when I take my dog to the dog park and it's been a little wet outside, then my dog's paws are all muddy. Anyway, it's, I'm just not a big fan of gravel. Pervious pavement would be awesome. I would love to see more native plantings in the rain gardens and removal of invasive species. I think all of those will help with, you know, dealing with runoff. So. I think another thing I wanted to mention is butterfly gardens, because we just had an Eagle Scout put in one, which was awesome. So.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, along with that, just piggybacking on the gardens, the rain gardens and what so forth. I think a lot of people may have moved to Canton and maybe don't realize that there's a great deal of engineering that has gone on before they got here in terms of rainwater runoff, detention parks, retention parks, the designs that are there and the native species that are really good to grow in those areas. And I think as as for an educational type of stance, along with those gardens, perhaps Canton could be a lot larger on the the sharing of that information and why do we have, why is it good? Okay, why, you know, sharing that with people, why is it good and helping that to to flourish? I just a, an idea, I know I live off of one myself and I sometimes see some abuse of the the detention area that I live off of. Because I think people don't understand why it's even there in the first place.
Oh, that's true. That's true. That's summer.
Yeah, as far as the the native plants, you know, we're talking about doing something similar through the Ford Road Boulevard and maybe talking to some landscape architects about that. And I was just thinking if we were to do that, it might be nice to have a similar theme throughout the township and the native plants that we use. I do love the idea of a rain garden or a butterfly garden and also pervious pavement. I do want to caution us to be careful about things like gravel, though, because I think there may be some accessibility issues there with gravel as far as like wheelchairs or people that use walkers and and the like. So.
Right.
Okay.
Pervious paving does require maintenance, too. You kind of have to clean it, like sweep it, hoover it to keep it pervious, but.
Yeah, that's true. And just so you know, I got two calls from residents last week. I mean, they were trying to put solar on their roofs and some of the HOAs are not allowing them to also. So that's also another hurdle that we have.
So there was a precedent set just to give you info on solar and HOAs. I can give you more info later, but there was actually a lawsuit against my HOA on that and they lost. So.
Oh, good. Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Tanya?
The homeowner lost or the HOA?
The HOA lost or the property lost?
The HOA lost.
Oh.
Gotcha. Okay.
Good to know. Tanya?
Yeah, and somebody was talking about having some, you know, education sessions about retention on, was it Greg?
Yeah.
I I was just wondering that, you know, about the native plants. If we can, if we are doing this summer set township-wide, we can also put this information on our website so that people know. You know, people are doing a lot of gardening this pandemic, so they might know what to plant in their gardens, too. Sometimes, you know, we are, there's a lot of construction of homes happening and people might want to do some native planting there. Have an educate, like some sort of information on our website on that.
It's true.
If I can add to that, you know, maybe Patrick can help me on this. Because it seems to me that the township had a lot of wonderful material published years back on detention parks, retention parks. In fact, they did a lot of encouragement to communities to to develop one, develop those areas where they hadn't really been developed by the developers when the community was built. I happen to be living in one myself and the township actually helped us, you know, with with the plantings and whatnot through the planning department and through, you know, other engineering aspects. So I I think it's one of those things that maybe has been fallen by the wayside a little bit in terms of people knowing what's going on. I think, you know, we've, we've had a wonderful community, so much that people want to live here, but they don't always know all the features as to why it's so nice. And this is one of them. It's an aspect that I think should be heightened and they they should care for it and they should further it by the knowledge that that this is, this is good for our community. Just like cleaning up our roads.
Yeah, like you even say, your removal of invasive species is on there and phragmatis is one that is invading some of our parks right now. And that we want to make sure people will understand what those phragmatis are and start to help to remove them. Because they will choke off our wildlife. Anyone else? Michael?
Yeah, I think, Joe, jumping in with that, I mean, I think we should have a township goal of eliminating 100% of the phragmatis on township, school, county and private property. That stuff is horrible. It's destroying cattails. It's destroying wildlife habitat. It's, it's, and most people don't even know what it is. They're like, oh, that's what the cattails look like when they explode or something. They have no, you see it. The only time they get mad about it is when it's obstructing their view because the county hasn't cleared it from a right of way. That's the only time they care is when it's obstructing a view on a road. So that's, I think that's a huge thing. One thing that we did COVID that was really, really cool was the Walk with a Naturalist. And we're doing it again, I saw in the pamphlets. I'm excited about that. Where they'll bring in somebody from one of the groups, I think it was Clint Metro Parks was the last time. I don't know if it's the same individual or if it's the same organization that's coming in. But take a number of people through the wetland reclamation area that is behind Floating Park, points out the types of species out there, talks about the wildlife, explains kind of the natural geography of the area. You get a huge education. And it's a, it's a really cool, low-impact kind of programming. Didn't look like it was overly expensive to do. And and the feedback from the community was pretty awesome. Now it's pretty, it was, it was like, it was a minimal impact. You couldn't like service a couple hundred people at a time, right? It was a small group of people walking, but that kind of stuff is super cool. It's like things like bird watching. We brought in a bird watcher to go out to Patriot Park and walk around and be like, let's go, like starts pointing out the birds. Maybe constellation viewing in the middle of the, in the middle of the summer night, go out and lay down in the Heritage Park and look up at their, or probably not Heritage Park because of the neighborhood. But, you know, Patriot Park and look up at the stars. But you know, Patriot Park and look up at the stars, you know, find, you know, find out the constellations. Like that's. Super cool programming that I think would be cool. Different slower pace maybe than some of the active programming that we've done. I like the idea of of green energy in the parks. When I was at the zoo. It was super cool to see the DTE solar pavilion that they had there. It's like DT paid to put it in there, which I mean, the the zoo gets more traffic than than like. Floating. So I don't know that they're a DTE pavilion in in Floating Park, but. Maybe there'd be, maybe there'd be a partnership there. I I don't know. But it was super cool. Um and they also have uh one of the solar flowers at at the at the at the zoo. Now, it's like thirty five, forty thousand bucks. It's not inexpensive. But uh I liked that. I thought it was pretty cool and um.
They have smaller ones too.
Nice. Oh, I think that's, that's, that's cool stuff because. It it reminds me of the future. It reminds me of. Technology and I think about the individuals who are moving here. I think about young families moving here over the next couple of decades and what they're gonna be looking for. These are gonna be well-educated people with. You know, they're gonna be working in the advanced technology field for the automotive companies, right? So this idea, you know, people who would see that go, oh, green energy. That's probably a view that is gonna be leaving um the community and people who look at that and say like. Oh, that's the field I'm in. This is what we're doing. This is what, you know, tha- that excitement around that. I think tha- that that's probably something that would be a cool thing. Uh to feature. Um but yeah, most definitely, I like the idea. Of keeping things relatively dark in some of the more passive areas, you know, allowing um some of the more passive areas to stay somewhat uh passive. We don't have um. We don't have um parking at all of the trailheads for the um. For that Lower Rouge Trail, which is um, you know, so you can go to, you can, you can get on the trail at Warren, or I'm sorry, now. About Morton Taylor, the Morton Taylor. And you can get it to it from the library, but there's still a good little jaunt down um. Down Canton Center and I don't know that that's entirely connected from a sidewalk standpoint. So I'm just curious, like. Things that we might want to think about is if there's parcels that come up, um tax parcels that come up, uh we might want to purchase for parking at at some point. And then there's some of these two, I'm trying to think about Morton Taylor on the north side, right? So we had. But he's told me my connection's unstable, so if I'm breaking up, I apologize. But on the north side of of Morton, uh north side of township, Morton Taylor, there's two square areas. One of them backs up to Hallthing. Elementary School. It's over by where the new water tower is. Um that for that, that old farmer jack area and the other one's directly across the street. Those were wetland mitigation areas from the subdivisions that were built around there, right? Their township owned. Can't be developed, but but perhaps we could put a a non-assessable walking trail. There's already a natural one in it that the neighbors have put in. Perhaps there's something we could do there and I'll and and maybe put some some parking spaces. Just outside of the right of ways. People can pull up and then just walk around, go for a quick little little nature walk. I don't know. Just things like that. I kind of like those. I like the idea of allowing people to kind of interact with uh. The natural environment in a way um that I think is like more relevant and 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 just like. Not like I'm gonna go out to nature. Um another thing I like, um I was thinking about like with regards to um. You know, Ann Arbor has the arboretum. Which is super cool, very expensive, but super cool. And um so if we're talking about parks about Patriot Park, you know. You know, in our, you know, this is like Canton's a blank canvas because a substantial amount of our. You know, why is Heritage Park? Why is there so much, there's no shade at Heritage Park? Cause it's probably a farm, probably a farm field. You know, there's gonna be great shade in Ann Arbor because it was a bunch of forests. Well, we had a farm field. So of course. Our natural park areas have no shade. We don't have hundred and fifty year old trees, you know, these giant sycamores and oaks that you can sit under. And read a book because um Canton's just. Different. It's just, it's just completely different. You know, the land we have is a blank canvas. But so what does, what does parks look like in a hundred years? What does it look like in forty years and fifty years, right? So we could plant some of the beautiful trees out there. Um I like that. I like. The interpretive. I know when we put out the survey to the residents with the library, interpretive signage came in really low as a priority. I was really bummed to see that. And I want to attack that survey. It's methodology, but I can't um fortunately. But I, cause I like the idea of being like, this is an American oak. This is a sycamore tree. This is a this tree. If you see, if you see these birds in the forest, these are, you know, the birds you're seeing and whatever. You know, this is a cool, look at these plants, uh that kind of stuff, because it's educational. And I said it at our last meeting. We oftentimes in Canton Township pretend like history started in eighteen thirty four when the first white man moved to Canton Township, but it didn't. The Potawatomi uh natives were were walking through Canton Township on their way from Detroit. To Chicago for um hundreds of years prior and natives uh natives have been walking that trail for thousands of years. We don't really reference that that much. I know there is. A cool sign uh at Getty's now, uh talks about the territorial road, but the Sauk Trail, we don't talk much about. Chief Tonquish. Right? We don't talk much about as well, but that's a huge part of Canton history. That um really goes unnoticed and unmentioned. I think it's cool to find a way to bring that in. At Plymouth Township Park. I know that the Alliance of Rouge Communities have put up some signs referencing uh early inhabitants of. The area prior to settlement. I think that'd be a really cool thing for us to do.
No, great idea. Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, I I have a question. This is probably a question for the trustees more than anybody else because you guys. Um you know, have to deal with the budget and um you know, the the spending of our taxed dollars and whatnot. Uh when I was on the DDA, it the the subject came up many, many times about. You know, whether or not the uh central business dis- district was a walkable uh area because it was so linear. Linear, the the. I guess the, there was, had mixed feelings. There were people that said, yeah, we we really are in our own little pockets. Along that three mile route, but for the most part, people just want to drive to the stores and drive back home again. And so things like uh bike racks and benches. Were kind of pushed aside. They were brought up. But it it never went anywhere. Does the township, uh has the township ever entertained the idea of just being the the the. The pusher of this idea that we can be a walkable community. And now this isn't directly related to the parks, but in a way it is because. If it says to people visiting us to come shop. That this is a walkable community, we might be getting them involved in our parks and it's a different attitude altogether. So I'm I'm wondering, you know, from the standpoint of uh helping out the DDA. Um with just taking ownership of the walkable aspects of Ford Road. By putting benches here and there, bike racks here and there that can owns. And see what happens.
I haven't heard that lately, Greg. Are you just talking about along Ford Road?
Yeah, yeah.
That lately. That's one thing to bring up, though. You're right. I mean, you know, they're gonna widen Ford Road and take some of that siding. We're gonna lose some land, so.
Yeah, I I I've, the push against it has always been uh. No, there's no way that Canton's gonna ever be a walkable community. Well, this discussion that we're having tonight. Says, says otherwise, that people are interested in this. But I think sometimes we kind of drop the ball in some important aspects. Um and this might be one of them. If there can. I'm done. Uh that was my idea. I'm done, done.
I I used to live and work in Dearborn and one of the things that had Dearborn struggled for years. With what to do with their, what they call the West Dearborn Business District, where Jacobson's and. And all that sort of thing existed. Um primarily, and they always wanted to be pedestrian friendly and they've tried to do that now, but the. The thing they always fell back on was that they kind of got messed up when. Michigan Avenue was made what it, what it is now. And the the constant discussion was about traffic calming. Along Michigan Avenue at that point. And they, they've tried a little bit of it. I don't think it's been very successful from a standpoint of making. Michigan Avenue itself pedestrian friendly. Some of the new development they have. Along Michigan Avenue where Jacobson's used to be and such, it made a little more pedestrian friendly within the developments. But not along Michigan Avenue itself. And I just wonder if Ford Road is that. It is not that conducive to it. I mean. I I guess, I guess it's kind of, in my mind, it's kind of wait and see what happens with Ford Road once they do the reconstruction. And I don't know that traffic will slow down at all unless we enforce it or or we do undertake some measures to calm the traffic. But I I I I get what you're saying. I I'd like to see it too, but I just don't know.
Yeah, that's where the conversation usually goes. It's kind of, kind of like the trending thing like, well, I don't know. I don't know. And I just. I just wonder if maybe we need to push the button and just say, hey, look, this is worth the try. We want to be a certain community. Let's, let's make it happen.
We can look at that more as as it comes out, like Doug said. That's a good idea. Anyone else on this question?
I just wanted to um say something about what Greg um just brought up and um what, you know, Doug was talking about. I think there's a lot. Of folks in this community that say, well, this is how it is right now and there's no way. That we can change it or fix it or or build something different. But I think human behavior is going to change a lot in the next ten years. The Boulevard is gonna create something new on Ford Road. And I think if we want to have those conversations and figure out what the Ford Road of the future looks like. Um now is the time to do it and not to accept that this is the way that it is. And that, you know, we can't do anything about it. It's always gonna be an area full of. Automobile traffic and we can put even small things in place right, places right now. Um to make people more comfortable with biking and walking and, you know, getting used to those type of things.
Or we can just let M. that determine it for us. That's a joke.
I agree with Summer. Um it, the community is changing and people do want to walk and bike more. So just adding a few little. I think is a great idea because it is changing. People want to. Um more of a walkable community. So I agree with Summer.
Michael?
Yeah, so I'll just, you know, jump in real quick because while it's not germane to the the current setup of leader services, to be talking about walkability on Ford Road, it might in the future. I think. And one of the things that that's always kind of concerned me is long-term trends with um. You know, generations, right? Like, so like larger homes aren't typically being bought en masse by like millennials and younger generations. They're looking for smaller. Um homes, they're looking for livable, walkable communities. They're looking, you know, like a a lot of times um people will. Especially now, if if you, if people can work virtually, they might be looking more for like place. Moving towards a place as opposed to proximity to my job, proximity, you know, Canton Township's lovely where. Right in between Detroit and Ann Arbor, Oakland County's right there as well. It's a great community, good school, safe, phenomenal parks, right? That's why we're all here. Great community to live and raise your family. Um if you're looking for proximity to commerce. Um and Canton Township has developed around the automobile like most of Southeast Michigan. Well. What we're seeing in a lot of places is communities that have developed economically around the automobile are starting to um fall apart a little bit. Their com- their commercial districts are falling apart a little bit. They're having a hard time keeping uh retail. Um what happens when margins continue to. On all of these retail uh places. So I think at some point. We are gonna have to look at Ford Road. Um and I and I think it makes sense. To have it walkable if you have bodies there. Um I don't know that you can penetrate Ford Road. From the neighborhoods yet in a safe and efficient manner. Um as witnessed this winter, when I watched a man fall on his way to Ford Road. And he was have, he he had some housing insecurity and he had no transportation. And this man was going to go down to Aldi, he was going to um Tim Hortons and he was going to Aldi. I picked him up. In the middle of the pandemic, I was terrified the whole time, but I couldn't leave this guy. He'd fallen snow. I couldn't leave by the Ford Road. He was gonna, you know, he had a suitcase and he was going to Tim Hortons and he was gonna go to Aldi and he was gonna go back to his house and. He was battling the elements, he was battling traffic, he was battling the wind, he was battling everything. Uh in an area that's not designed for that at all. It's designed around the automobile. So if we do decide in the end. That we want to look at the long-term planning on there, we had some serious problems. We've got. Water and sewer infrastructure built for a certain amount of people. Well, that would drastically change that. So there's a lot of investment that would do, that would happen. As well. And I know that Patrick is like telling me to shut up right now because he doesn't want me to go down this, this red. But I do worry about. Um is Canton Township going to be a place that is desirable for families in thirty years? Is Canton Township gonna be a place that's desirable for families in forty years? Um especially if. A family doesn't own four cars. If the combustible engine people don't see unless they're at a sports car show. Or at a museum. If people don't drive anymore. But what does Ford Road look like if you don't need parking? Because cars aren't stationary anymore. Um and if that's the case and you put bodies on Ford Road and you've got a different style of retail, well, you probably want to put parks on Ford Road.
So that's, that's a, that's, Michael, that's a point though, right there. You ju- you just touched on your very last point and this may not be a popular opinion. But if you look at Ford Road now, alright, so it's walkable. What are you walking to? I mean, the Target? The the shopping centers are on Ford Road. I mean, they're not, they're not destinations that I think of walking to. There's no parks. There's no small businesses. I I think you would have, now I would you have to reinvent the roadway, but I think you have to reinvent. What's on Ford Road from a business perspective. And that's, that's a huge undertaking. I'm not saying it can't be done. But it's a huge undertaking and a lot of discussion has to happen. You know, last week in the Planning Commission, we had, we had a controversial subject about the hotels to be built on Lily Road. And I'm very glad that didn't happen. I'm just sitting here thinking about. We talked about walkability on Ford Road. And one of the arguments that was brought up during that discussion many times as well, if you don't put the hotels there, you can put a shopping center there or or whatever the case may be. Maybe the township should look, look at taking that property and making that into park area. That that could be used for the will, you know, we're talking about lack of parks on the northern, northern side of Ford Road. There's a place there that. That could be made into that. And you have some businesses along that stretch of Ford Road, that maybe there is some walkability to. Anyway, my point is. I- i- it's, it's not just Ford Road. It's not just the car. We gotta be thinking about, I think it's a whole concept of Ford Road. We have to think about. If you wanna, if you wanna make it pedestrian friendly or or whatever. And that probably involves, that involves this board, the Planning Commission, the DDA, property owners. It's, it's, that's. It's, it's a great idea, I think. And I think it's, and you know, I think. I think Summer, I think you said it, or maybe um maybe Dawn said it. The, everyone's mind just may, needs to be made up. Okay, we know this is difficult. But it may be a tough decision that we have to start in pursuit, go down the road and see where it takes us. And maybe the construction of Ford Road will, can be the. Sort of the fuse that lights that, that uh. That thinking.
Well, we do have a DDA committee, just to let you know, DDA aesthetics committee, which is working to do just that. And and also just to let you know, this board. Um and the commission are meeting again in August to go over the master plan and do some tweaking. So I think these are good inputs to that. But right now, currently, the DDA committee is meeting, so that 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 can, this can all be taken back. But I'm gonna get us back on track.
We took a walk there. You don't get the township board and the planning commission together very often.
Yeah, I know, I know. And we will be soon. We're going to be in August again, just to let you know, a couple more months. We're meeting again in August again to start with on the master plan. So, okay, Kate, one more quick one.
Well, hopefully it's quick. Um so. Not sure this is exactly on topic, but I wanted to throw it out there um because people have mentioned. Doing some education and also signage. One of the things that the board had to do when we were talking uh, when we were first looking at our goals was we had to. Research other communities and um one of the communities I looked at was Evanston, Illinois. I think Tanya did also. But they have something called an eco hub and on their eco hub, and I'm gonna put the link in the chat. Um they have like all the different initiatives um that are related to. Being eco-friendly or um. Uh having a healthy ecosystem and um they have the city. Initiatives on there, but residents can also put, like if a resident put. Initiatives on there, but residents can also put, like, if a resident puts. Builds a rain garden, they could put it on the eco hub. So I'm just putting that out there because I think it's pretty cool and I think. Um. It would be an interesting thing to do, um. If we have the manpower.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, Laura, what's your last question?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to kind of circle back to something that, um, Ms. Foster had shared earlier about the. Um, the use of gravel in parking lots versus accessibility. You know, I think those, you know. Providing a healthy ecosystem and providing that, um, access and inclusivity. You know, are two of the townships, you know, kind of overarching goals and, you know, throughout the design process. Um, Mark and I will really be looking for solutions to kind of strike the balance between the two. Um, because you don't want to discourage users, of course, from parks. Um. But you also want to, you know, ensure that. The infrastructure that you are, um, investing in. You know. Is a good investment. Financially, but also, um, environmentally. So I just wanted to make sure that, um. We will be looking for different solutions and kind of bridging, um. That gap.
And Laura, can I, can I just chime in a little bit? I think too, um. I- if we go towards a direction of. Purvous, more so gravel parking lots or or less. Developed parking lots than what you currently have with your forty-eight acres. Uh, is that going to be an ordinance, uh, change? Uh, as requiring paved parking lots and and uh, uh, curbed parking lots as well? So that's probably something that we should, uh, you know, discuss too, or you folks should discuss as a policy change. Uh, ordinance change to allow that use rather than creating a, an opportunity or a. Uh, maybe a, a hurdle for a variance request.
Right.
You're right.
Yeah, I think the initial discussion that brought up wanting to go to gravel was the fact we're currently doing like a thirteen million dollar CIP and that we spent a substantial amount of money on concrete. Um. And we're a growing community, as you all know, especially on the planning commission, but the minute those rooftops stop coming in, our tax base stops expanding. And, um, a lot of. You know, we pave paradise and, um.
Put the parking lot.
Lot of money to maintain that asphalt, not concrete. A lot of money.
And, and also it does add to warming. That's another thing too, you know, which, which is something.
So there's a way to blend access, but also. You know. And I think that we were just talking about potentially doing that at the Patriot Park area. I don't know.
Thank you.
All right, um, so for the last question, I wanted to touch on, um, year-round usage of, um, the park. So. Um, you think about all the different facilities across the township. Um, things that you've experienced or you've heard from your neighbors or friends, um, or other constituents. Um, what are some, even if it's a minor surgical tweak that we can make to a park plan, um, to encourage that year-round use?
Wow, I think we've covered a lot of them. Kate, go ahead.
So, um, I want to say it was. Maybe Greg. Somebody mentioned, um, an ice rink. And I don't know how feasible this is, but when I was between seven and fourteen, I lived in East Lansing and. They would, um, create. Ice rinks, um, very informal. Ice rinks in their parks every winter. And that's how I learned to ice skate, um, was just going to the free. Um, frozen. Area in the, in the local park. Um. So I don't know if, you know, there might be liability issues. I have no idea, but. Throwing that out there, um, I, I think there are ways to do like a, um. Uh, what would you call it? Portable or in like non-permanent type ice rink that. Might be, um, something we could do or look at. Um, I will say also, I did see some kids on one of the ponds, um, on the golf course playing hockey this past summers. I mean, summer, winter. Um, one of the few times that it was cold enough for them to do that. Um, and I thought that was kind of cool. I was also a little worried. Um. But I would love to do that. I would love to have skiing, um, as Greg mentioned. Um, I have cross-country skis in my basement that I've been sitting there for a while. Um, another thing we used to do in East Lansing was we would go, um, skiing at the golf course. In the winter. Um.
It was nice.
So, yeah, all of those winter sports, if there are ways we can do them, I. I, um, have to give kudos to Laura and, um, the rest of leisure services that, that, um, sled. And, and it wasn't really rental, was it? It was like, um.
Just a lot, Larry.
Pretty like.
Return.
Yeah, that was awesome. That was a really cool, creative idea. So, um. All of those things I think are awesome. I think. Again, shade in the summer is really important. And the pool, so.
Yeah, Michael.
So I don't know if it's a physical improvements, but one thing I was thinking about it at Patriot Park, which would be kind of cool if that's like. Could be like a seasonal park as well. And I was thinking like, if you did like a fall festival or like a harvest festival, you could have. You put a bunch of pumpkins out there. People could be, be good to have a, you pick on pumpkins, you know, double a bunch of pumpkins out there. People could go out there, pick up the pumpkins. Um, if you planted. Apple trees at some point, you could have an orchard out there too, which would be kind of cool. I was thinking about like hay rides. You could have hay rides out there, even in the summertime, you could have bonfires out there. People could go out there and you could have smore roasting and stuff like that. That would be super cool. And then you could pivot right in in a couple of months and you could have like a winter fest out there too, where you have like Hot Chocolate Hut out there. Where you have people, where you could have like a company like Sun and Snow, I think is like in downtown Plymouth, they rent. Cross-country skis, snowshoes, where people could go out there. And I know the initial plan for Patriot Park had, um. A pond, potential pond, uh, for fishing, um, that would freeze over, I assume, in the wintertime. You could essentially have ice skating out there as well. I saw. I saw them ice skating out on the, on the, um. Pond and the, uh, golf course too. And that was cool, um, you know, it's pretty safe for the most part. I mean, like, you know, my, my mom lives on a lake. People drive their F-150s out on the, on the ice, you know, it's, it's amazing. How much that ice can. Work.
So just to say, um, you know, the, the pot, the, the ice rinks that were in East Lansing when I was a kid, um. They went over a pond. They actually like. Had a layer of ice over a grassy area. Um, so no fear of falling through, and I'm sure Greg has got something to say about that.
Yeah, Floden used to have one also. I, my kid used to skate there. Go ahead, Greg.
I just want to make a note, the ponds on the golf course are. Detention and retention for irrigation. The levels raise and lower a lot. So even when that ice seems really safe, the water could be quite below and it's. It's really, I would not recommend using that, um. We have signs for that, so.
And that's what I was afraid of, but I mean, like I said, I thought it was really cool. But also very scary for me as a mom to see those kids doing that.
Greg?
Now, don't boo, but I, I did bring up the, the cross-country skiing and I, I, I thoroughly think we should have, have a Canton skating, an outdoor skating rink. Well, I'm surprised nobody brought up the idea of having downhill skiing at the landfill on Michigan Avenue.
Well, it's not ours, but also Riverview did that and their, uh, their hill went down real quick as the garbage disintegrated. So. It might be an option in, what, fifteen years?
Anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up.
I think.
It's probably a smelly idea.
It stinks, Greg. Oh, Nancy?
I, last winter, the, um. I guess it was on the golf course, there was a, a walk and look at holiday lights. And, you know, maybe it was because it was the pandemic and I was just so darn happy to get out because. I know it was absolutely freezing, but, um. We loved it. I mean, it was just really fun. And on the whole walk talked about, gosh, this would be wonderful to have every year and it could be. You know, in, in improved and added to and more sponsors coming. And I think. I think that would be the sort of thing that could be very fun for people and have it last. A lot longer, so a lot longer, more people could do it. But I thought that was a great use.
It's coming back and it will be the whole month of December. We've already planned.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Great.
Awesome.
And actually do it for DiVale. Somebody had suggested doing it more in the fall for DiVale lights.
Hmm.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say that if we can start in November, DiVale is in November.
Okay.
Warmer than two, which would be nice.
Yeah, so it would be kind of, uh, going along the welcoming communities theme. And, uh, yeah, but I love the idea of cross-country on golf courses. We can use those golf courses in winter and, uh. I don't know, do the golf courses offer golf lessons? And like, I don't know, that's one way of. Some, some sort of, because a lot of places do, like even in the, all through the year and. That's a good way of. Getting more revenue. That's. Because my daughter is a golfer, I know that.
Oh, Shandra's here. Shandra, you had your hand raised. Did you want to say something?
No, I kind of agree with, uh, Tanya's suggestion. It's a great idea. DiVale will be a first.
Mm-hmm. Yep, in the golf course, yeah.
Yeah.
I gotta run down. Our crew will talk.
Anyone else?
I have a question, not really related to this question, but I don't know what, what else to ask it. Then maybe in a way it's related to this question. Where does? Where do the thoughts lie now with Preservation Park now that the barn's gone? And what kind of programming or what? We talk about your own, own programming and I. I think it was Michael mentioned the idea of having. A fall festival someplace and then a winter festival at Patriot Park or whatever. Preservation Park, of course, the barn's gone now, but. There's other agricultural or type things that go on there. Maybe that would be a place for a fall festival. Um, of course Plymouth has their fall festival, so I don't know if you'd run into. Conflict issues that way, but just, just kind of a question I just stood, sitting here thinking about as, as we talk about all the various parts in the, in the township.
We do have some plans for some programming, actually July, August and September, um, to do, it's actually like a dinner. It's called Bites. It was called Bites at the Barn, but now it's Bites for the Barn. Um, and the proceeds will go to further development. Um, but it's local chefs and food trucks and people will pay for a ticket. Um, and get small plate items to taste. There'll be local art vendors, um, as well as musicians. And then we are bringing out, it'll be new this year, like a fall kind of Halloween event that will take you. Um, through Preservation Park and parts of Cherry Hill Village. So there's some, a little short-term future planning for there, but I'll let anybody else speak on the barn.
Greg, do you want to give a status on the barn?
On. Very short steps. Um, we are waiting. So the, the latest is we're waiting. Um, and hopefully, I, I'm, I was hoping to get an update today from our insurance company on the structural engineering assessment of the silo. Once we receive that, um, the, our insurance company will tell us whether or not that silo needs to be removed. And then we can move forward from there, either removing all of the debris from the barn or the barn and the silo. And then, um, the fencing can be removed and, um, it'll be backfilled and we can, uh, we're going to put up a tent. Um, over the farmer's market area so that we can, uh, have, uh, our events and rentals that were out there and utilize that space. Um, and then from there, we'll proceed with insurance on. Other recoveries and then looking for, um. Ideas moving forward as to what will, um, plan for that space. Um, it's. We, we don't have any direction currently, um. It's just going to be, we, we need to kind of get, worry about the cleanup first, and then from there, we will worry about, uh. Future usage. Uh, there's been, I've heard a multitude of options. Staff certainly has a ton of ideas. As to what would best suit that area. We've had residents reach out to us. We're excited that everyone has so much passion for that area. Uh, once we get the, uh. The debris removed, then we could start to look forward as to, to what we'll do with that space.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone else have anything for Laura? Okay.
I have, I have a question that, um, is, is not necessarily related to like an outdoor activity, uh, for leisure services, but it's something that was. Held at the summit, um, for many, many years. Um. We used to have Canton's own version of a home show. Um, usually in like March or February or something like that. Um, is there any ideas or thoughts as to bringing that back?
I don't know if you guys have had that. Laura or Greg, do, or Jeanette, do you have that on your?
I can kind of chime in.
Yeah, John. I, I listed everybody with John and John is the one I should have picked.
I went in for others and nobody else. I had the, uh, the facial expressions out there already, so. It was actually a, a decision municipal services kind of evaluated back when, when that decision was made to. To kind of suspend it, uh, with the addition of the Novi Center. And the home show being offered up there, it really pulled away from a lot of our vendors and traffic that we were foot traffic to. A lot of residents. So it was kind of meeting a need and so. You know, the attendance and number of vendors had dropped so significantly on that home show that the decision was kind of made for. Uh, you know, for a lot of very good intelligent reasons. So it's kind of why it fell off and with the growth and success of, of the expo center, I, I don't know that that would probably come back anytime soon.
Yeah. Okay.
The, the why, I guess, behind it.
Okay, thanks. Laura. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Laura, would you like to kind of bring the group up to speed with what our next steps are and what they can expect?
Yeah, happy to. Um, so we will be doing a number of public engagement, um, sessions this summer. Um, we'll be at the, uh, summer concerts in the park this Thursday at six thirty. Um, we'll have a tent up, so, um, we'd love for you to, to stop by, um, at that event and then. Um, we'll be meeting with a couple of different focus groups as well. Um, we also have bi-weekly meetings with leisure services, um, as kind of progress updates. And then through the month of July, we'll really be, um, looking at Patriot Park and Heritage Park and kind of. Um, taking the public feedback, um, that we've gathered and, um, doing some conceptual designs. And then we'll be back in August, um, at the farmer's market and, um, at National Night Out to, um. Gather some additional public feedback on those different concept plans. Um, and also have some additional focus group meetings. And then, of course, there will be, um, meetings with, um. Um, leisure services and, um, the township board.
Thank you. Shandra, did you have something to say?
Uh, yeah, I, I had a question about the ecosystem that was, uh, mentioned in the package about, uh. Invasive species. And I was wondering how big a problem was that, you know, is that a challenge that we face in our parks, uh? In terms of invasive species kind of, uh, being very disruptive and is that something that we take in a regular fashion? Just wanted to know a little about that.
Don or Greg?
Oh.
Yeah, I can, I can address that one a little bit. We have had a three-year plan to address some of the invasive species, particularly at the golf courses and our sports center as far as, um. The. My gosh, Brad Sharp would kill me. I'm, I can't remember the, I'm blanking on the name of the, the really tall. Frag mighties. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, I can't believe that Brad Sharp is going to haunt me in my dreams this evening. Um. So he was certainly, uh, a champion of taking care of the fiber arc. Jeez, oh, man, the frag mighties. Um, throughout the parks, we have, uh, eradicate the majority of those. We also had a large patch of them in Heritage Park. Um, near kind of just north of the splash pad. Um, it's a multi-year process to eliminate those and takes specialized treatments. So we've been working towards that. Um, but if you drive around. So we've been working towards that. Um but if you drive around Canton, they're all over the place, they're ten, twelve feet tall. In the right of ways, and it's not just Canton property, they're kind of everywhere and they really do choke off native species. It it's a big problem, not just for Canton, um but for for Michigan and really everywhere in the area. So the biggest challenge is, once you get rid of them, you have to plant other things to keep them gone and stay on top of the problem. Because they are very pervasive and will take over an area very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask, Chandra, since you weren't here for roll call, are you in Canton or what location are you at?
Yeah, Canton, Wayne County.
Beautiful, thank you.
So did you have anything else for us, then Laura and Jeanette? Laura, Laura, Jeanette, or Mark?
I'll let Laura finish up and then I'll take over.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for all your input um and time this evening. It's very valuable to hear from each one of you. Um we would love it if you could attend um one or all of the public engagement events that we have planned um for the summer. And um if you have any ideas um or thoughts on parks and rock and trails in Canton, even if it's a very small idea. We would love to hear it. Um so if you could just, you know, share those ideas um and thoughts with Greg. We'll follow up with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, um everyone for coming. Um the board is going to go into a closed session in a moment. But did the planning commissioners have anything else they wanted to add or say?
Thanks, thanks for for organizing this and getting us to all together. I think it's good.
Thank you.
Nice seeing all of you. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Everybody. Madam Supervisor, do we have an individual who will be keeping the meeting alive while we are in closed session?
Yes, I was thinking about that. The only one left is nobody. Oh no, Greg, I'm not choosing this, Greg. Anthony is in, Anthony, Cheryl. Let me ask Cheryl.
Is that Anthony, is that my Anthony?
I don't know. Anthony, is it?
Best maker?
Is that you, Anthony?
They they probably went away.
Maybe Cheryl, because we know that.
Yeah, that's me, I'm here.
How's uh how's I, how's the uh MAMC Institute going?
It's lovely, exhausted, learning lots, um lots of good information today.
We are gonna go into closed session. Would you be willing to keep your Zoom, would you be willing to stay here and keep your Zoom account on for about an maybe half hour, hour?
Sure.
And we'll be back uh and then voting to go out of at a closed.
It sounds good.
Oh, go to sleep. Motion to go into um closed session.
Um before we do that, um would you be willing to, Anthony, can you change your name to to uh closed session or something like that? So that if somebody logs in, they understand that we're in closed session.
I am on my phone. I will try to look into how to do that. From my phone.
If I can read, I can rename you.
Oh, okay.
Is he in a tent? He's he's listed as an attendee right now. We gotta promote him to panelist.
I thought I did.
Just give him permission to talk.
Maybe I did.
You just you just gave him permission to talk. I'm promoting him to panelist. All right, there he is. And then now I will rename him. Oh, where is he? Now I will rename you. Session. Now, Madam. Madam Supervisor, I moved the board go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute. Uh in the Open Meetings Act under MCL one five two six eight subsection H.
Support.
Office of the Cork Seagulls, please take roll call on the motion.
All right, Borninsky.
I.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Seagull's eye, Slavens.
Hi.
All right.
All right, motion passes. I will see everyone in closed session. Thanks, Anthony. We'll be right back. All right, can I have um a motion to? Session.
Madam Supervisor, I move to return to open session.
Support.
Cork Seagulls, please take roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
I.
Foster.
I.
Ganguly.
I.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Secretize Slavens.
Hi.
Okay, great, thank you. Um the next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Let's see any hands or phone calls in. All right, does anyone have anything else they want to add to the meeting?
I'm just happy we um we, you know, our staff has worked so hard during COVID. And so I'm happy, I appreciate everybody approving, giving them Friday, the July second off. Spend some time with their family. And we'll get that posted to and the website and and uh on the door of Township Hall. Just to let residents know, we won't be open Friday, July second.
Yes, thank you very much. We also, I don't know if everybody knows, but um our police chief Chad was honored at the Juneteenth Juneteenth celebration. Um by the local Jack and Jill chapter um for his work that he's done with them over the years that they've done as a police department. So that was nice. So we did get it um awarded for Juneteenth. But we also put out the resolution last week and that will be coming up. That's this week. That is coming up. And the first concert in the park is this Thursday. It's a Bob Seger cover band, so it's supposed to be really good if anyone likes Bob Seger. Yes, and then I do too. Let's see, anything else? Oh, the pride flag, I the pride banner is here. I thought it was a flag, but I found it was a banner. So it's an eight, so for our pride celebration, it's I think eight by twelve. So it has to be hung on a wall. It doesn't have um the circles for a flag, so just to let you know that. So maybe everybody's around on the twenty first, we can take a picture together. All right, great. Does anyone have anything else? All right, oh, one more thing, we have been getting, in case you guys hear from residents, GFL, they're still um behind, um they're working late. Uh compost was picked up Saturday, so they did catch up Saturday by working overtime. Um but we have continued to get emails still about compost this week again, starting not to be picked up. So they're getting the garbage, but the compost might still be delayed. So if you hear from residents, we're on the phone with GFL every day.
Are they, are they notifying the township if they're not going to get to everything?
No, that's that's a good point. I will bring that up to Jade because they did say that they would do that. You're right.
Yeah.
I've seen some um messages on Facebook from the township saying like. You know, it's Monday and they didn't finish everything, so please leave. Your cans out.
Yeah, we did a social media post today about that as well, a few hours for our board meeting. So it looks like the municipal services is getting information and pushing it out to people. You know, this is an interesting thing because we like to look at everything like consumers. I know when we had our study session last week, we talked about it from a contract maintenance. Kind of standpoint about what our expectations would be with our contractor. What's interesting is this appears to be industry pervasive. So regardless of who your contractor is, service is struggling, but also community pervasive as well. So regardless of where you live, service is down. So in this instance, if there's no other option, that's happening to everybody universally. It's actually a communal problem we all have to solve somehow. So I want to work with GFL on this, you know, we can call them, demand. You know, try to convince them to stop picking up in Dearborn and pick up in Canton instead, and maybe if we're loud enough, they will, but that's not gonna solve the overall problem, which is. The job, the wages, um the labor shortage in general, and the fact that 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 work is really challenging, really challenging. And um and I know they got a hit when they had to move to the Department of Transportation. Zero tolerance drug testing policy. I know that we lost a lot of, they lost a lot of, there was a huge labor shortage as a result of that as well. So it's interesting, um something we all have to figure out how to solve going forward, all communities and all the companies.
Right, and even in the township, I mean, we have a lot of part-time jobs we can't fill this summer. It's part-time seasonal. And um you know, the college students are back, so you have to try to recruit.
Yeah, people are um making decisions about how much they are willing to sell their labor for right now.
Yeah. Very true.
Yep.
All right, great. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Support.
Thank you, Cork Seagulls, please take roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
I.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
I always think she's frozen.
Okay, Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagull's eye, Slavens.
Hi.
And that's it.
Okay, everybody, have a good night.